163, Environmental nuisances of the code of ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa. This is the first reading of it.
This is a code we've been looking at for a while. Charlie has been working with our attorneys through Lynch Dallas on some of the language within our code, partly looking at our code from an enforcement standpoint and how we utilize it. Does it meet state code requirements? Are we following the requirements we're supposed to be doing? Does it include all the necessary language? And then secondary to that is, or not secondary, but second item from that is, are there things we can be doing differently to try and improve our enforcement ability through our staff time and resources? So going through it, towards the beginning of the code, under 16303, there's some minor language to a couple of the nuisance items under number 11 and 12, I guess clarifying some of what those nuisances are. Number 14 replaces the previous 14 to try and better clarify what tall grass and weed requirements are based on location. We have a lot of natural areas, ravine areas. When does this apply and when doesn't it apply? Vehicles, we do have a set date for hearing on junk vehicles and that'll be brought back through that process, clarifying that and what our processes are through that for addressing those type of vehicles. The new 15 is kind of a, trying to address abatement of illegally parked vehicles, not necessarily junk vehicles, but vehicles that are parked in front yards or on grass, illegal to our zoning code and other codes, having the ability to tow those to illegally parked space in the street. Instead of going through our municipal infraction process that has taken months to get to a point of judge saying you need to move this off of property and takes a lot of staff time and sometimes legal time. So that was a code section there that was added. And then a lot of the stuff later on is kind of code clarifications from a legal standpoint, just expanding the language, right of entry for inspection, when can we enter a property to inspect it for nuisance, warrants, nuisance abatement, nuisance abatement and nuisance contents, what's to be included in our nuisance abatement notifications, method of service. And then 163.10 is a kind of a new section that's an attempt to, I guess, try and efficient, make our process a little more efficient. So for items under nuisance code 16303, 11 through 15, which primarily applies to tall grass and weeds, junk, and then those vehicles that are illegally parked on grass, we can provide a notice published in the newspaper each year stating that maintaining property as required under this chapter shall be done and the property has 14 dates, days from the date of publication to remedy the nuisance condition. For the notice will result in the city causing the work to be done. So it essentially allows us, after providing this notice, not to have to go through a certified mail process. We can post, legally post the vehicle or post the property and have it abated through that process. There's some clarification on what requires a certified mail and what doesn't for an owner or property or resident. And this makes it a little more clear that we can have this notice that serves as the public notice and then we just do our normal placarding with the orange tag and that meets all the legal requirements. That was kind of that gray area of when does that tag meet the legal requirements? That's what we've normally done is tagging properties, but there's been some question on, do we have to have certified mail or not? Do we have to notify the owner or the residents of this kind of? A lot of this code is an attempt to clarify that and when we have to do that and when we don't.
Is the timeframe still going, is it three days for things like grass and trash?
Yeah. Timeframe is more of an internal policy. Some trash, it's the next day. If it's blowing around, we're going to abate it immediately. That's a, I think it talks in here, emergency abatement. If we see blowing around trash, we're not going to wait three days to let it blow all over neighborhood.
Sure, okay.
But grass is three to five days, trash is generally three days. Those are kind of the, at the nuisance inspectors.
So those timelines aren't changing?
No.
It's just the processes of notification that are.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then under 16311, request for hearing, we have that in all our nuisance notices that if someone is agreed by these, they can request a hearing. Wasn't specifically in our code, it's in state code, so making sure that we follow, following the requirements of state code by adding that in there. And then again, failure to abate, emergency abatement by city, we've had requirements on these in the past, but after it goes through our legal counsel, those seem to be expanded in the language just to cover what they feel is needed to make sure we're hitting all our bases legally on that. Same for liability, foreclosed property allows for certain nuisances to apply there, and then penalty, allowing administrative penalties. So a lot of this was just language added by attorney. The primary changes were that 163.03 nuisance is designated, what qualifies for tall grass and weeds depending on the area, illegally parked vehicles can be towed to the street, and then the nuisance notification, allowing publication in newspaper to serve as the notice with the additional orange tag placard meeting those requirements and not having to do certified mail or having the question of whether that is required for grass or trash or vehicles. Well, it's a lot to cover in short time, but I guess that's kind of the main goals with it. We are going to have Charlie here at the next work session to talk about, a little more on this as well as the vehicles that'll be coming up and then the garage program and then some future nuisance programs as well and just cover nuisance in general at that time.
Okay.
But if you have any specific questions now, I can try and answer them.
I do have a little bit of concern about the notification process because the Hawkeye has maybe, let's say, 7,000 subscribers in the Burlington area, which is not a majority of the property owners in Burlington. And the placard process, if a person is not paying attention, doesn't use their front door or whatever, you know, I'm afraid we're just, I would like to see us have some kind of contact with the property owner before we just go in there and clean it up. What one man's junk is another man's treasure and I wouldn't want to be part of anything where we're taking a man's property and disposing it without talking to him. Now, yes, that should be something that the property owner should be dealing with, but if they're not getting a certified mail notice, I'm concerned whether we're getting the notice to them. Do you understand where it's coming from on that? I realize it's a hassle, but I am concerned about that.
Well, John, I would think, I don't know the number of people that get the certified mail or actually getting the certified.
Well, that's, yeah, that's another issue, but.
I mean, and we could do 15 things and still not reach everybody in the community. So I don't think, we're never going to be able to get the information out there to everybody, but I think this is probably a step in the right direction to alleviate that process. Otherwise, otherwise it takes away our ability to effectively get rid of the, to abate the problem.
No, don't misunderstand me. I want it cleaned up because a lot of our, a lot of our yards and homes need to be cleaned up. It's just, you know, I always get a little sensitive when we start talking about someone else's property. And so, you know, and publishing the notice in the Hawkeye, which is, I know this is traditional, but as that number has gone down over the years and not everybody gets it, that's, you know, they're not seeing that. So I'm just, I'm concerned about it. You know, the yellow placards, I see those, you know, out on homes from time to time and it seems like another one goes up, nothing's being done and nothing's being resolved on the property. Well, is the gentleman or the lady that owns it home, are they in a hospital or are they even absentee owner? That's why I'd like to have some.
You're still sending out letters, aren't you?
Was it?
You're still sending out a letter, you just don't send out a certified letter.
Not with this, we placarded the property with the orange tags.
No letters.
Oh, no letters at all, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of okay without a certified letter, but I still think we ought to send them some notice besides just the placard. But that's just, that's my opinion, so.
So with these, how often would they go on the paper? Like every day there would be?
It's a once a year publication.
Okay, so.
Obviously, we'd put on, talked to council meeting, put on our website and our Facebook page and get that word out there and we'd still, a lot of our notices now are the placard because there's a question of when is a certified required or not. So this is just making sure what we're doing most of the time now is completely legal by our code. It's not a complete change in what we're doing, it's making sure what we're doing isn't, can't be challenged in court.
Have other cities gone this route and it works for them?
Yeah, the.
I mean, we went to Davenport, this is exactly what they did.
That's what they do?
Yeah, and we've talked to other communities and they're all doing this.
Yeah, sometimes there's initially pushback when you change and that's normal and people get used to it.
It's a template that's coming from other communities. I mean, this wasn't just a random idea and they've had success with this. And their biggest issue was, like Eric alluded to, the trash. I mean, you need to have the ability to abate that immediately because of the hazard or because of the issue that it can cause in the neighborhoods. And I think the biggest thing is, and we talked about it when we were on some of these trips, is these guys just don't go in and start pulling property off randomly. I mean, they use a lot of due regard. So if it's a trash bag that's been cut open by a.
Yeah, that I don't have a prob, what I'm talking about is like, you know, taking personal property, like maybe a guy's got a ladder and a mower stored outside. We're assuming because it's outside that the mower is junk. Well, maybe it's not.
Yeah.
That I have a concern with as far as lifting that as part of the quote unquote trash. I have no problems with them picking up a bag of trash and scrapping, you know, that should be cleaned up and shame on the homeowner for not having it cleaned up. But if there's property there that might have some value, that, I have, I have a problem with us picking it up and disposing it just in a, in a random manner. You know, if a guy has ladders outside, if he has a wheelbarrow, you know, does that mean that, is that junk because it's sitting outside and not in the garage?
No.
No, I mean, I don't think that's the avenue that we're headed down.
We are very conservative on that. We don't take items that we feel have value. You can store in an orderly manner, ladders or wheelbarrows or stuff outside. We've taken junk and then put back ladders against the garage because we do not want to get in that issue of them accusing us of taking personal property. That's something we're very sensitive to.
That's just where the due regard comes, comes to. I mean, you guys, if you show up and the wheelbarrow has got 50 holes in it and doesn't have a wheel and the handles are all broken off and it's sitting back by the alley away from the property, well, then that might be considered trash. But if it's a, if it's a good looking wheelbarrow and it's tucked up nicely next to the house and it just happens to be sitting there.
Well, I know that'd be common sense. Is a contractor doing this or us?
Contractor does it, but if there's items, a large cleanup item, we meet them out there and specify, these are the items you need to keep on site or these are the items that need to be removed. I wouldn't say 90%, but the vast majority of this is the trash and grass and weeds. We do have some large cleanups, but most of them are the trash and grass and weeds and then clear junk items. We don't, we don't take ladders or mowers that we know or seem to be operable. If they're tipped over and there's no mortar there and it's just a scrap heap, we, that's one thing.
Then goes without saying.
If it appears to be an operable or usable item, then it needs to be stored and we'd give additional notice, either these have to be stored inside or in an orderly manner, so.
Sure, okay.
All right, any other questions?
Not this time.
Okay. All right, next we have consideration of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances city of Burlington by creating a new chapter, 100, storm water management and drainage systems utility.
Good evening.
Hi Nick.
Hello. In front of you is a, it's been worded as a repeal and replace of chapter 100, our storm water utility. It is a further continued conversation from the presentation that we had from Vindström Kim on our storm water utility feasibility study. I will talk a little bit about what we have currently for code. Our code is not very expanded upon, it's fairly short, rest is set every year by resolution. It currently goes, the storm and sanitary are in the same fund, that's something that'll change. If you want to hit the next slide for me. This is our current rate structure set by resolution. As you can see, metered and unmetered, our residential properties, ones billed at $2.50 and the other ones billed at $7.51. And then you get into the commercial and industrial properties. The threshold of square footage there, that less than 25,000, then 25,000 to 50,000 is impervious surface conversation, similar to what we're going to talk about here. It's just not worded that way in the ordinance and then not in the resolution either. And then there's a lot of space in between there for categorizations for rates. So if you'd hit the next slide for me. So I'll talk about, a little bit about what V and K did for us. V and K took a look at our current ordinance and took a look at several different options. I won't talk about the other options, but they use GIS to calculate impervious surface in the non-residential, so multifamily, commercial, industrial properties and they have that all on a GIS website or a database for us. And based on that, you can, you can understand what the impervious surface is for those properties. Impervious surface defined in our ordinance is any surface that does not let water penetrate into the ground and soak in. So gravel is assumed as an impervious surface. It can become that way after it's driven on. It creates kind of a barrier between the top rock surface. It probably will perviate or go through a little bit, but then it creates a kind of a barriers to not soak through all the way. You want to hit the next slide for me? And so through all this calculation and research on that, they came up with staff and us to use the equivalent residential unit method. And so that is what our ordinance is based off of. The ERU method took 150 residential homes and they took the average impervious surface on those residential homes. The average, you'll see that on the next slide, but it's the average impervious surface for residential units is 3,360 square feet. And so what is then done is that ERU rate of square footage is then applied to all multifamily commercial and industrial properties. And so a property might have 4.3 ERUs. So if you want to hit the next slide, I guess that's probably what this talks about. So if that commercial property had, let's use a round number so I don't have to do math, four ERUs, you would take four times the $2.58 that we set through resolution. So, you want to hit the next slide? This is kind of a breakdown in the number of properties, the ERU rate, they assumed it, I borrowed their slideshow, so their rates hadn't changed since we had just recently changed them. And the annual revenue based on them and then the average cost of what their storm water utility will be with the ERU method. As you can see, most of our property is residential. All of them will be charged the same fee for single family residential or duplexes are included in that, $2.58 per property. If you'd hit the next slide. So why the ERU method, what, you know, what is the reasoning for that? It causes a little bit more equitable transfer of the costs for storm water maintenance to the property owners. With our current ordinance, there is large gaps. So 25,000 square foot to 50,000 square foot, they all pay the same fee. And so if your square footage was just one square foot over top of that, you're already automatically into the next categorization and you're paying that fee upwards. So this at least takes it and breaks it down into multiple different units. So someone that had, you know, 25,000, one square foot of property was previously paying a set fee, the same as the person with 50,000. Well, now it's broken down into much smaller units and then that person is charged therefore. If you'd hit the next slide. So what does that mean in cost for, you know, if your impervious surface is a certain threshold? This chart kind of shows what that billing would look like, difference from, from our current ordinance to our new ordinance change that we're recommending. So you can see there's kind of a threshold where it crosses where some of the properties are actually going to be charged less, some of are fairly comparable, and then you get into the larger square footage areas and they're paying a significant portion more than probably what they were paying in the past. And one of the issues that we identified from, from this storm water utility rate study was that impervious surface or the solid surface that was being calculated for our current ordinance wasn't a true reflection of what was really happening. So there were, there were several properties throughout town that were not being charged the appropriate rate because their impervious surface was much higher than what was on file. And there was no, there was no backward correction of that. And so that, that is where most of the people will see their, their increase is in the true calculation of impervious surface. I think that's the last slide. Most of the ordinance change is a lot of definitions. The one thing it does do is create a separate storm water fund to be used to take care of storm water. A lot of it will be probably used for sewer separation costs. Without going too much into the rest of the details, I can answer any questions that you have.
I guess I would, the only thing, I was thinking about this after we talked about it the other day. So you have like wood, like an ADM elevator we have on the riverfront, okay? They don't have any sewers. It's all gravel or cement around them. So how does that, how does that one qualify? I mean, how do you determine that?
I'm sure that that property was, was calculated with the impervious surface in mind.
Okay.
As far as storm sewer itself, there probably is no true storm sewer that serves them. But the reason why they use impervious surface, because it contributes to the storm water problem that cities and whatnot see.
We have, we have other properties in town that.
That are that way.
That are, I mean, you have, we have residential property that people will ask, well, why is it that we're paying this fee? Our water drains to the north are out of town. It's just the best system you can come up with.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that question because someone's going to ask you.
Yep. And detention ponds, I know that there's a requirement to put in detention ponds. The one thing I will comment on that is, is those detention ponds are there to kick, to take on the load of storm water from a rain event, but ultimately that system, that retention pond is still connected to the storm water system. So it holds the water for a period of time, but then ultimately, not in every case, most cases dump right back into our storm water system.
And we've already discussed this, but we are going to move forward with coming up with other things that property owners can do in order to receive credit under this new system.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And that's coming within the next six months.
Correct.
It's just we needed to meet the fee numbers by July 1st, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So that was my question. If a business owner found out under this new system that they owed substantially more, there are things they can do to.
To get a credit, right.
Correct.
So that they're not paying. And that's my biggest thing is I don't want to just blatantly start charging people because of this. I want them to have the opportunity to improve their building, to help alleviate the stress on the storm system, the sewer system.
One of the hardest parts about the change that this is doing, about half of the increased revenues that will be collected from the commercial industrial is just from appropriately calculating the impervious surface.
Making the adjustments, okay.
The other half is by modifications and it's based on, you can look at the chart, it's a, it's a larger property areas.
There was, there was large parking lots that had previously not been put onto anybody's bill. You know, I'm not, I'm not, I don't know their specific billing, but you know, the Dick's parking lot or the Shopko area parking lot, shared parking lots that are maybe separate parcels that were never part of calculations that went to a direct bill. So, so industries like that will likely see a fairly substantial increase depending on the ownership.
68% of the property, was that what you indicated, were under the 10,000, which means 68%?
I think it was, I remember 63 or 68, but it was a fairly large portion under 10,000 square foot.
So that percentage of people are actually going to see a decrease in what they're paying on their water bill under the storm water portion, correct?
Correct.
Tanner, you got that? Okay.
And, and the reason, and I kind of.
You too Dave.
The ordinance that we are using is a, is a model ordinance established by the Iowa Municipal Association.
Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities. And really it's based off of one that's on a federal level, has stood the test of time in terms of court challenges to appropriate, whether you have appropriate charges or not.
Okay.
No other questions, thanks Nick.
All right, next we have a consideration of a transit grant application.
Hey Nick.
Yeah, it didn't go very far, did it? We do this resolution every year to approve a grant, a consolidated grant application. It's how we get our funding for the transit agency. The statewide assistance is 233,679. The federal transit assistant is 399,497. Kind of saw a little bit of a jump downward for the state assistance and upward for federal. And then also capital spending is a part of this grant application. I have four buses on there. They are not all four budgeted for in our, in our CIP budget, but for, the reason I put them on there is in case a lot of federal funds come available, some sort of infrastructure spending. We want to have these buses available to try and get that type of funding available. I don't think that they'll probably meet the scoring that they have to follow under to get that funds, but it's worth it to put them on there. We don't lose anything by putting them on there. I will bring you updated transit numbers here soon. I have a quarter coming up, well, getting my numbers reported anyway. All these numbers that you see here, the statewide and federal assistance is based off of ridership and then miles traveled. Where we as a in-town, small urban system, we fall short of a lot of the regional agencies because they travel a lot more miles in a given year, but we have a lot more, I shouldn't say a lot more. For instance, C bus has less passengers than we do, but they put on a lot more miles than we do. So it's kind of a give and take. We lost a little bit in percentage, we're in a pool with some other small urban agencies. So you can see that 1.59% is also in there. It's a percentage of the overall whole that we get from the small urban conglomerate. And so I don't want to say we're fighting for those dollars, but as we get more rides, we take a higher percentage of the ones, you know, Atumwa or Marshalltown or things like that. So kind of complicated, but ultimately this is just a grant application that we go after every year.
Okay.
And we need, we need this funding to operate.
So the portions that are guaranteed are the state and federal operation funding.
Correct.
That's 635,000 out of about a little over $900,000 budget. The federal and state funds cover about two-thirds of our.
Correct.
Operations. We raised another 100,000 from ridership. And then you have a little bit of fees that were associated with like advertising that we collect and West Burlington provides a small subsidy.
Nominal amounts, but.
And the rest is covered out of our general fund. I think that you have two buses that were in the CIP plan.
Correct.
And I can't remember if you were, if those, I think it was both set up at the 85-15 split, or was one of them looking at an idea of.
I think one of them was full purchase.
So if we were to get four buses, it would fit within our match.
And I put that in the memo, the 59,000, if we were to have all four funded. And we just purchased a light duty bus here recently and it was less than the 99,000 that I had in the application, which in turn means less match, but the overall price is less too. So that number probably could come down some.
Hey Nick, I wanted to go real quick back to the, actually, does anybody have any questions on that before I go back to the storm water sewer?
On the buses? No, I think I'm good.
We're good.
On the storm water sewer stuff, I'm assuming other communities are doing this?
Correct.
And what kind of impact does it have on job growth creation? I mean, are we looking at a big dollar on the larger facilities?
I think so.
I mean, is there any measurables out there for that kind of information?
Job growth based off of storm water fees?
You start increasing manufacturing costs and it's going to have an effect, so.
A negative effect.
Yeah, do we look at any of that?
It's the same kind of, but I mean.
I, I guess I don't know that.
As we get into.
That information's out there. You know, I, I did make a presentation at the chamber where the general manager of Silgan Containers was there and he has, there's quite a bit of. Containers was there, and he has, there's quite a bit of impervious surface out there. His current, I don't know the actual numbers, but it was, his current bill's like $200 a month underneath our current system. Using calculations, it's $320 a month.
So, we're not talking about a giant lead.
And as he talked about it-
For his side, I would say $120 is a fairly substantial increase.
It was substantial, but as he talked about it, even as they went to go do their annual budgets, it wasn't something that was an issue for a significant impact on what he was gonna have to do with that budget.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's gonna vary from one business to another.
Sure, absolutely, but I wanted to make sure I asked that because that's obviously an important-
And that being said, $200 a month is off of, I think the, I think it's been based off of the building permits, but a lot of the square footage of concrete for parking and drive hasn't been included in that.
Permitted.
And so, I didn't do that calculation of what our current system would do with that impervious surface, but I would have to imagine it's fairly substantial increase compared to what his current bill is.
Okay.
Using the old methodology and true calculations.
Anything else?
Nope.
I guess the whole idea that we use with any of the, using a rates, rate study, is trying to make sure that we have a system in place that equitably charges every type of property based off of their percentage of the overall system, under some rational basis.
It looks fair to me, I just wanted to-
And you're always gonna have winners and losers when you do that, but that's, you're just trying to do something that you can say this is fair to, as fair as we can make it.
Right.
And I will, I'll bring the images that I provided, Mr. Crowner. He asked me what four of his properties would do, the car washes. It's all public information, so I'm not really speaking out of turn. In some of his properties, one of them he saw a decrease, one of them he saw an increase of 40 cents per month, and then another one was increased by like, from $12.50 to $38. But there's quite a bit of concrete in there that I don't think has been calculated.
Calculated.
So, just to give you an idea, that's small, relatively smaller properties, but just to give you an idea on what it'll do to people.
But to me, it's much fairer than what we had before, so.
Yep.
All right. Next, we have a preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street right-of-way located adjacent to the property at 1408 Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa.
No changes from previous reading, again, kind of continuation of what had been done a few years ago, vacating that portion of right-of-way. The properties, four properties to the north have already acquired that, and it is under easement for future access and utilities as well.
Okay.
Do we-
Can we, can we, yeah, that's why, thank you.
Yeah. Can we wave that?
Wave and go to the final reading?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Please.
All right. Next, we have a resolution authorizing issuance of 2018A bonds.
This will follow up on Travis's presentation last time in, with the final, it'll have the, we don't have it, the resolution, but as we do, it'll be in the packet for us next week, and it'll essentially detail out the actual bond amounts and repayment schedule. But it's based off of essentially what he summarized with what our average interest carrying cost is gonna be in the, over the life of the bond.
That offering was done this week, wasn't it? Or was it last?
Those bonds were sold last Monday. That's what he summarized was that, but this will be the final document that lists out the repayment schedule, and the borrowing will actually take place, is that May 1, where we get the, where the funds clear and come to us.
Okay.
All right. Next, we have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Agency Street Widening Project East End.
I have more slides for this, but again, it's a quick one. We got bids here this last Tuesday for the Agency Street East project. We did have three bidders. First, I'll go through our budget on this. The construction budget for this project was 1.862 million. We did have an engineer's construction estimate that was quite a bit higher than that, but bids did come in just 50,000 over what the actual budget was. I don't know, in our memo, we kind of addressed engineering costs to this point. We hired a third party to design this one, just so we could get caught up on our workload. They were a little bit higher than the in-house fees would typically be, so we're running about $50,000 over on the engineering side as well, and you'll see that outlined in your memo. But we are recommending that we award Mike Nelson Concrete Paving on this one. The schedule should we award would put them on a May start, and will be done by October, or November, I should say. Does anyone have any questions on any of that?
Any questions?
It's a local company, so.
This is higher than what was in the budget, the CIP, for overall project. That goes back to a number that has been in there from two years ago. So, as you think about an estimate from two years ago being within about 100,000 when it was originally designed with the thought process of having the engineering done in-house, and now we're doing it outside, so that's half of the cost difference. It's pretty close to what we'd originally budgeted on it. As we talked about how to deal with the cost overrun, you know, this project is funded with some TSIP funds from the state for the Traffic Safety Improvement Plan, from the state for the lights, and the rest with TIF funds. Overruns on this, we may have a little bit of extra TIF funds that we can apply to this, we may not. Otherwise, we'll use the general borrowing that we did for street projects, which is where as we identified that we're not spending a full amount of bonded for the HMA, this has a little bit of flexibility that we can cover the shortfall with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving the final plat of Gillette Farm subdivision. Am I saying that correctly?
This is a three-lot subdivision, located in the southwest corner of Burlington, off of Hunt Road. Two of the lots are in the city of Burlington, one lot being outside of the city of Burlington. This dash line here is the city limits with this being in Des Moines County, looking to subdivide off the home and the structures there from the remaining portion of the lot. A little more perspective on where it's located, south off of Highway 61, this being Comfort Suites and the airport, these three lots in here. So, it is a minor subdivision, meets our zoning requirements, and is, I guess, partially within the two-mile growth area as well, being that it splits between the city and the county.
Okay. Any questions?
So, what are we wanting to do? They're wanting to split off the home?
There's, currently, it's, yeah, splitting off the home from this, and then having the remaining outbuildings, and then this home on a separate lot.
With the purpose of doing what?
Selling them separate from the remaining land to the farmland to the south. This farmland to the, behind it is also part of that lot, so they're splitting off the developed area from the undeveloped.
Okay.
Next, we have a resolution adopting the personal manual for non-union employees.
In your packet is the updated manual. This is something we annually do after we've approved the budget. So, basically, the only changes I've made are on a few pages. On page two, you see the salary adjustments. We have what's a transition table. So, what we base our raises on is where you're falling in on, excuse me, on the actual salary schedule, which is the last page. So, we're saying that the, a position that pays, the midpoint is what somebody who's been doing the job and knows how to do it well should be getting paid. So, if you're under the midpoint, to get you there faster, you get a little accelerated increase based on how long you've been here. So, and if you're already at midpoint, then your increase would be 2.25. So, these were all calculated when we put the budget numbers in the budget based on each individual person and how long they've been at their position and where their salary is falling. The other change, I updated the insurance information, that's on page nine. Employees are contributing 6% of the cost with not to exceed $45 monthly for single and 75 for family.
Change there matches what the changes that we have in our union agreements?
Yes.
The same changes that go on for the rest of the city employees.
Yes.
And the 2.25% is the same percentage change that's in the union contracts too.
All right. Any other questions? Okay.
Did you, did you change, Stephanie, the increase, the salary ranges?
Yes.
So, the salary ranges that are in here increased the 2%, so both the, or the minimum and maximums all changed 2% in there, and that's designed to try to, I mean, when, the last time we had this done, the waters study was done back in 2009, and we went, I think, five years, maybe five years without adjusting the minimum and maximums, and got to a point where, when we redid this study, we had several positions that, there were some significant changes that had to occur to get those schedules in line. Internally, we had a lot of issues when we weren't doing that. Then the union positions, you had a lot, you had staff that, in departments that were bumping up to the supervisory positions and having trouble getting folks to move up in ranks because they could actually see pay cuts go on to go from a union to a non-union position. So, that, seeing that, those, this table move up is something that we do to try to keep from getting into that kind of a bind in the future.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving City of Burlington, Iowa Goal Setting Report dated March 22.
So, in your packet is, what, 17 pages? It's forever? It's the same format that he uses each time he goes, does this, so-
It was pretty wordy. It took me a while to read it.
You'll get used to it as time goes on, but, you know, as you get through it, it's, a lot of it is review of what's gone on in the past and kind of what we look as a backdrop for what our existing situation is. And you get to, in the page 13 is the new priority projects, programs, and initiatives, and that's really what came out of the goal-setting session. It includes input from the mayor who wasn't able to be a part of that with the rest of you. Again, as Jeff Schott mentioned when he was working with you through this process, approving this by resolution is where you formally adopt what those priorities are gonna be for the next couple of years. You certainly are welcome to make changes. It's kind of designed to be, you came out of that session, this is where you're moving forward, but you certainly could make some adjustments if you needed to.
Anybody have any questions on that?
No, I didn't see any changes from where we were at when we did it, so.
Good.
All right, at the moment.
All right. Next, we have a resolution approving the appointment of Chief of Police.
I hate not being able to-
I really plan to reel on this one. No.
This is something where we are looking forward to be able to see-
Feeling a filibuster?
This is something where we are looking forward to see Major Kramer go from an acting chief to the permanent chief position next Monday, based off of the process we've been through. One thing that Kathleen noted on this resolution, it's, and here it's at the end, she's gonna move this up to the front of the agenda, of the agenda.
Right, yeah.
That makes sense.
So that any fellow or anything that wants to be here for that doesn't have to stay around for-
Till the end.
Sounds good.
Major Kramer, are you providing the snacks and punch?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. First one is a resolution approving demolition slash nuisance abatements for various properties. Does anybody have any issues?
Nope.
Next is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with Piper Jeffrey and Company to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosure.
And the only thing that is done in here, it amends our arrangement with, we have an ongoing arrangement, dissemination agreement. This adds the new bond issue that we're undertaking to that. Makes no substantive changes except to acknowledge that we have a new bond issue.
Wouldn't we have done that before they started selling your bonds?
This is all part of the process.
Okay.
All right. I guess we have a resolution proposing-
Some of this, as you talk about dissemination agreement, part of that is, as much as anything, they spread information to rating agencies. They, do they update some of the online portal stuff with the SEC too?
Yeah.
So, that's a service that now they will undertake for these new issues, and until we issue the bonds, there's no need to have this amendment done.
Okay.
So, this is an appropriate spot for this step to occur.
And the issuance takes place in next month?
May 1.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Next, we have a resolution proposing Federal Highway Administration Federal Functional Classification Changes for Roadways as described within the cities of Burlington and West Burlington, Iowa.
Again, I have a resolution here, change in the federal classification for the roadways in Burlington. This resolution is a, is a shared resolution. I guess we would approve it first, and then it would go to West Burlington. This is Jared Larister, Lassiter?
Lassiter.
Lassiter, from the regional planning. We started this conversation with West Burlington on changing some of the classification of our roads. He is the expert in the classification, so I'm not gonna try and pretend like I know what it all means, but ultimately, it allows us to go after different grant applications and whatnot. It's the classification of the roads, and I'm gonna let him talk about it.
So, this is a list of a number of changes here, including some segments in both Burlington and West Burlington. The initial inspiration for this was looking at, actually, South Broadway Street in West Burlington. The city had noticed that, in working on a current project for resurfacing Broadway north of Agency, finding out that south of Agency is still classified as a local road, which basically, there's the, starts out with a major arterial, which is typically in the form of actual US state highways. Minor arterials are, can sometimes be like a state or county highway as well, but other important city streets, and then beneath that is collector, which is, funnels the traffic from within neighborhoods and smaller developments to the arterials. So, a local road is anything below that, that, with Nick mentioned, looking at opportunities for grant funding, typically, at least in relation to the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program as an example, that funding is only eligible for roads that are classified as a collector or higher. So, that would be one ramification there where you have these local roads that would make more sense as a collector based on how they are functioning to serve the day-to-day traffic needs of the community. So, in finding out that Broadway south of Agency is not classified as, is currently classified as a local road, we found the same thing was true for Division Street- Street, pretty much for the entire stretch from, uh, Roosevelt 61 over to Gear Avenue, uh, which includes portions in both Burlington and West Burlington. And so, this gets to the main point here where we're looking at an area of the Burlington, West Burlington region where, uh, this area has developed a lot over the last 25 years and so the, the, it's one of those cases where this, these, the system, as you, as you see depicted here, this is the current federal functional classification map for the Burlington area. Um, there's always a tendency as places grow and develop over time, um, that the traffic patterns will tend to shift and, uh, roads that previously, uh, had lower traffic volumes or had been newly paved to serve those needs over the, over that period, uh, have come to function as an arterial or a collector. And so, it would make sense to amend, uh, that system to include those in there. So, here, here, we're looking at specifically that area of Burlington, West Burlington, where currently you've got Agency, West, Gear, and West Burlington Avenue are all classified as arterials, uh, whereas, uh, and then Broadway north from Agency up into West Burlington is also an arterial. But presently, Broadway South at that point and then Division between Gear and Roosevelt are, are not classified, uh, they're classified as local roads. So, this proposal would have those, uh, added as collectors. Uh, Division, uh, to the east of Roosevelt is currently signed as a collector and so this would basically be a continuation of that. Um, it's also recommended that, that the short little stub piece going into the recplex be included as well. That's a common situation that, in consulting with the DOT on, uh, this process for doing a FFC change, that they, they typically like to consider, uh, when you have a large traffic generator like this where even, even if it's only one way in and out, uh, if it's expected to have a significant amount of traffic volume serving, uh, that one single facility, that would make sense to include, and that's what's, that's what's being proposed here. So, just as an example, you can see here, uh, to, to illustrate how back in 1994, this area was largely undeveloped farmland. Uh, Broadway was actually, um, kind of just a, a dead end out there to the south of that , uh, commercial industrial development, whereas today, you've had quite a bit of activity in that area over the last 20 years, the, the location of the Great River Medical Center to the west, the recplex being developed out there, some of the additional development at the Flintridge Business Park, and even some of the, uh, uh, commercial development along Agency and the, the SCC, uh, campus there, that, um, Division has often, uh, used as a, uh, a means of, of accessing those facilities, uh, from the, the south side of Burlington. So, as, as part of this, uh, process, whenever you have, uh, new roads added to the existing, uh, federal, uh, functional classification system for an urban area, um, there's only a certain amount that is eligible for, uh, inclusion as a collector or higher out of the total road mileage. And sometimes you'll have that, that go slightly over that, in the, which in this case would be 35%. Um, however, when you have an instance where it makes sense to add an additional road into the system that already meets that threshold, uh, what, what the DOT will typically do is an exchange where, uh, even if it's not a perfect one-to-one ratio of what, what's getting swapped out, um, if the community does an inventory and determines that there are some roads currently on the system as a collector or arterial, uh, that may make sense to be, uh, moved back down to a local road based on, uh, traffic volumes changing over time. So, that's what we did here, we have, we looked and reviewed the, the system citywide and determined a handful of segments that it would make sense to, uh, return to local status, uh, so that those other roads in, uh, in Burlington and West Burlington can be bumped up. So, this is an example here is, uh, North Fifth Street, which currently both North Fourth and North Fifth are classified as an arterial from Washington to Spring and then as a collector, uh, from Spring up to North. So, this, this reflects the days when, uh, those were a pair of one-way streets, uh, so that it makes sense to have those both on there because they're, they're essentially functioning as one street, whereas now, they're both two-way streets and traffic, uh, average daily traffic, uh, statistics indicate that Fourth is being used, uh, quite a bit more than Fifth in comparison, and so, it, it usually is preferred that you not have a, uh, arterial or collector that's directly parallel, uh, to another within a couple of blocks, so they should be spaced out a little bit more evenly. So, this, in this instance, seems like a natural, uh, opportunity to, to reduce that redundancy and, and have the, the status, uh, strictly for Fourth Street. The same thing for the segment of Market Street in between Sixth and Central, which parallels, um, Valley Street, which, and has very low traffic volume. Uh, this is kind of a more unique circumstance here on, uh, Course and Des Moines Avenue on the north side. Uh, what actually happened here, it appears at some point, there was a suggestion to possibly reduce the amount of mileage, uh, for arterial streets by, by showing a proposed continuation of Course Street from Des Moines Avenue, uh, to Bluff Road, which shows up on the, the DOT's GIS records as a Course, the Course Street extension, but, uh, anybody from Burlington will obviously know that there, that area is a very steep hill there and it really would make no sense to, to, it would not be feasible to actually have a road there, so that the logical choice then would be to shift that status over onto Des Moines Avenue, uh, to the north because that's how traffic from, uh, Course Street would access Bluff Road. And, uh, based on traffic volumes, following our, our view from the DOT, it was suggested then that that, that road be, uh, bumped down to a collector, uh, from its current arterial status. Um, this is just an illustration of that, just so you, so you can kind of picture that, that area and what's going on there. Lastly, uh, there's a, a segment of Hegeman Avenue on the south side, which, uh, is currently signed, or currently classified as a collector, uh, but it does have comparatively much lower traffic volumes. Uh, it's a fairly narrow street in comparison to some of the others in that area, and it just seemed like a, a, a good candidate for, for removal since a lot of the, that traffic is more dispersed onto the different north-south streets in that neighborhood, particularly, uh, Garfield, Lebrick, and Starr. There should be one. And then this is kind of another example of just kind of cleaning house where, uh, over time, some changes occur where, for example, in West Burlington, you had, uh, up until, uh, around 2010, when the, the Westland Mall had a, a ring road around it that was entirely private. That was altered so that, um, the north side of, of the mall is now a continuation of Houston Street and then, um, continuing west on Van Wiss, uh, curving to the north, it becomes Autumn Lane. Um, so, this is one of those instances that, that occurs fairly frequently where you have those changes, uh, that occur to the local road system, but the, the changes aren't automatically, uh, it would, it would rely on the local communities to make the changes to, so that the, the roads are, are classified according to how they've been readjusted. So, in this case, it would be a simple matter of continuing the collector designation up Autumn Lane to, to Houston so that that flow of traffic then empties out onto another collector. So, there's just, an illustration of that is just a, uh, what happened there, going from the ring road to the, to the intersections and having those, they now be public streets along the periphery of the mall. Any questions about any of that?
No.
No?
Very nice job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Oh, I guess I do. How likely, sorry, how likely is it to be approved, do you think?
Uh, as, we've already been in consultation with the DOT on this and, uh, there was actually one instance, if you'd notice on there, how, um, Ninth Street, where it, where it goes under that, um, uh, viaduct down towards Course Street, we had actually initially thought that that would make sense to include that on there, but when we, uh, submitted our request to the DOT, that was the one segment that was rejected specifically on the grounds that, uh, the vertical clearance isn't high enough to accommodate, uh, trucks and certain types of traffic that would be, would be necessary for it to be classified above a local road. So, that was one instance where that was, that was, that would not have worked out, but everything else got the, got the go-ahead from them.
Okay.
So, at this point, it's basically, uh, they, they, they defer to the local entity to, to pass a resolution in support so that, that can be changed.
I have a question for you too.
Mm-hmm.
So, is it advantageous as we change these classifications, maybe as the volume of traffic goes up, so the classification changes on the road, do we get more funding? Do we get more maintenance on the road? I mean, is it...
Isn't that the purpose of this?
Is it advantageous?
Changing the classification?
Well, that's what I'm asking, I don't know.
Well, the, the primary purpose is, is just to have a system that is, that logically matches what traffic volumes are in the community, and so each, each of those, uh, types of road, arterial, collector, and local have a, have a, a somewhat flexible definition, but a fairly, fairly distinct, uh, use in terms of how traffic is funneled from one to the other, uh, to the more higher, higher traffic roadways and, and major highways.
So, then it's more uniform definition nationwide or statewide?
Right, right, right. That, that, that's based on federal highway administration.
Okay.
Standards, so it's, um, in terms of the eligibility for funding, that just, again, when it comes to, um, uh, if it's, if it's, anything above a local road would be eligible for the STBG program. I know, I'm sure there, there are other programs for, for federal funding that would be the same thing, that if, to get federal funding, it needs to have that status.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
Each year, we submit an application for funding, um, through the, through the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Council.
Right.
And it, in order to be eligible for funding, it has to be a roadway that's designated on this system, doesn't it?
Right, right. At, at a collector or above.
It doesn't change how much we are eligible for, but it does change what street...
And that, and that's only for determining what is eligible. So, for example, for STBG, that, that, uh, there are a number of factors that are evaluated when, um, uh, scoring those projects and, and, and at the, competitively in our four county region. So, just because something is eligible to be on there because it's on the FFC, that doesn't mean it's, that it's, that it's automatically going to get funding because you still have to compete with other projects, but just to be actually able to submit an application and be considered...
Jared, Jared, any application we submit should be received funding, so...
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
All right.
And next, we have a resolution of support for a workforce housing tax incentive program project by Kelly Hall.
He's next too. We discussed previously, the state is not accepting applications for workforce housing at this time. If they do become, if it becomes open, they could use this as a, a letter of support. Um, there is no, um, requirement by the city with this, uh, as it would use, uh, local match would be the tax payment that any property in the community would be eligible for, but to even apply that, they have to have a resolution of support from the community, uh, and this would be for the, um, potential redevelopment of 816 Valley Street for residential use. Um, as I said previously, they're not accepting applications at this time, but if they do, this may meet those requirements and it may not, depending on what changes they make.
Wouldn't it make more sense to wait till they are accepting applications and figure out where we sit with this particular property at that point?
It could, I guess. It, it depends on the timing of it and, um, I guess, yeah, that'd be up to council if you wanted to support this or the applicant, if they want to go forward with it at this time or not.
Well, I, I just think that it would make more sense for us to, to pass that resolution when, when it's necessary to pass that resolution, not just pass it so that it's sitting out there. Does anybody else?
I mean, that has merit, man, unless, you know, unless time is of the essence and we have to have this in place, you know?
I think that's what we, she's run into before is that, that was a timing issue, wasn't it?
With some of the projects, whether she qualified or not.
So, we're not on the hook, we're just saying she can get it, she's, she's good to go.
Yeah, if it, if it opens up and this still meets the requirements for a letter of resolution of support.
I'm, I'm fine with it. She can get dialed building redeveloped in some way, go ahead. That building's been empty forever.
Yeah, because this would apply for both, um, this one and then the next one, which is the Burlington Crossing real estate.
Right.
The next one, he's, did state, I did talk to him about whether this would qualify, or the program as well, he did state he had submitted an application previously, was waiting for this. I don't know whether that's the case or not, but he had talked to the state and had previously actually submitted an application and needed a resolution of support, so I'm not sure if his will still qualify or not based on that timing.
Right.
Uh, the Burlington Crossing may qualify based on him having previously submitted an application.
Okay.
But Kelly Hall has, has not submitted any applications to date, so...
Okay. Any questions on either of those two then, besides?
I, I don't.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution approving easement agreements with Burlington Truck Rail, Inc. along Bluff Road for access to properties.
This is something tied to previous vacation of Oak Street. There was a, I guess the surveyors looking at the legal descriptions, a small portion that remained on Burlington Truck Rail that, uh, needed for the city and Water Works to have access back to the site and conversely, on, uh, city property for Truck Rail to have access to their site, so, really, it's a cleanup of a couple of the easements that were previously approved, uh, just to make sure that all parties have proper access there.
Right. Okay.
I'm red and green, both with the snow on it.
Next, we have a couple set dates for public hearings for May 7th. Consideration of plans and specifications for the 2018 Tama Building permeable alley. I don't know if we have anything for that yet, no?
Is it?
Is it set in the date?
Yeah.
It's set in the date.
And then consideration of an ordinance creating Chapter 163A junk vehicles of the code of ordinances of the city of Burlington, Iowa.
And that's just to follow up to the elimination that we just got to discussing, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, next, we have discussion items, master subdivision request for fire code exemption.
So, you do have quite a bit of material, background material in the packet, but I assume that, Steve, would you make a presentation in terms of what your request is?
I passed out some information. Something you'd like to say prior to that? Or, you have some comments with me?
Um, I, I gave my comments to the council.
Okay. Well, then, could I be, hear what those are?
They were in the packet.
Yeah. I'm not going to read the whole.
Yeah, it was a two-page letter, and then there was one from 2014, I think that was a couple pages from there.
Been that long already?
What's that?
Been that long already? Uh, I passed out a, kind of a statement in general about what I'd like you to consider and, uh, what I'd like to do is go into a little more detail as to why I'm asking you to, uh, either amend this code or to, uh, apply a variance to it. I guess my, uh, first inclination would be to ask you to not adopt the code or change that section of the code that applies to residential and individual sprinklers. And, um, I've got some information here that you may find interesting, some comments regarding what other cities had, um, to, uh, address this subject.
Thank you, Steve.
Next week, I plan on having a little better slide. I'm sorry for the, uh, mock-up here, but I wanted you to understand where this was at, if you didn't know. This is, uh, Florence Avenue here and, um, this is my subdivision, this is the Burlington Golf Course, so it kind of gives you an idea where they're going to here. This is the housing count, if you're interested in, uh, interpretation of the code, this is the housing count that goes down to my location. As you can see from this, or you will next week, there's 21 if you count from here to here. Now, if you want to count going down to here and off to this, uh, under direction, which is Crystal Drive, you'll come up with a 30 that, uh, is in excess of what the current code reads. But I guess what I'm saying is I don't expect a fire truck to get down there, turn around, then come back and go to my subdivision, put out a fire, so, I think that's a little over strict. This is all about competition. We're in competition with Moone County, West Burlington, every other city around us for housing. This costs $10,000 to sprinkle just one of these units, so that's a $70,000 hit that I'll take on this subdivision. People will go across the street to buy a car if it's a hundred dollars difference. Excuse me, I got a little bit of a cold working on me here. So I can't be expected to compete if the subject is competing for tax dollars from Burlington. So this is also about local control. Ordinances are adopted based upon what the oftentimes the state thinks is good policy for us here as local citizens. But home rule means that we get to decide what's best for us. And I don't think my property is any more at risk than Spirit Hollow, which has one entrance, or the county, which is right up the road from me. And I could go on and on and on, out through the south of town. Matter of fact, my street is flat all the way out to it. There's no overhanging trees. There's no high hills to go up that would get icy. So if you're talking about assessing risk, this is probably one of the least risky developments in the city of Burlington, plus it's all new materials. So to me, it doesn't make sense. And I'm certainly not anti-fire department. I think I'm pro-development. I'm probably the only one here tonight so far that's willing to spend money. And from here on out, it'd be my kids making those decisions, so my daughter will be at the council meeting next week. She is trying to determine what we should do in the future with our family investments. This does not turn me on, this interpretation of this code, I'll tell you that right now. I spent a lot of money in Burlington, and this is probably one that has upset me the most, is how we would put that kind of count and that interpretation of a code into a housing development. So I hope you'll give this serious consideration. And by the way, just so there's a little more information here for you, I've heard everybody say that it doesn't cost this much for sprinklers, well, here's the pose. So you won't be missing any information. Any questions?
Yes. Steve, how many units does your development have?
It will have nine.
Nine units. How many homes are on that street outside of your development? On, so as soon as you make that right-hand turn and head east, how many?
Down here?
In along Crystal, all, see, see where the two blue Xs are?
Yeah, well, those are the access.
Nope, I understand that. Excluding those two, how many homes are along that outlet, all the way down that street, down Crystal?
Down here?
Yeah, and down Crystal and all the way.
I don't know about Crystal. If you add them together, I think it does exceed 30.
Okay, I think, because when I counted, and Mark, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was 36 properties.
There was 40 building lots.
Right, but there was 36, I think, properties outside of his development, correct?
That's um.
So my question is, and the reason I'm asking that, is within the last 10 years, there's been four or five new homes built on the south side of that of that right hand, and I don't remember what the name of that street is right there, the right, Florence. So on the south side, there's been four or five new homes. Did we require those new homes to have sprinkler systems built in them when they were built, knowing that it still exceeded the 30 number, the number required there?
And the answer to that question is no, we did not.
And why?
And the reason is, is that those lots were originally planned into that development when it was approved back in the 1970s.
So it's based off of the development plot date, not the date of actual construction?
Well, what's happened is, is that the project that Mr. Zager has proposed to the city is a change from what was originally proposed to the city back in the 1970s, when that whole area was developed. And so originally, the the lot that Mr. Zager has, there were two homes on that, there were two separate lots. And he bought those two properties, and he removed those homes, and then he combined that into one large lot, which is a change from how the original development was proposed to the city and approved. So the homes that you're talking about, they built on on lots that were currently approved back by the city back in the 1970s.
With the building codes in the 1970s?
That were approved, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then, Steve, this was approved in 2014, is that correct?
Actually, it was originally proposed, and Eric can can clarify this, too, but it was originally brought to the development department in 2010. Because the initial review that was done, I want to say was in August of 2010. And then, I'm not sure what happened between 2010 and 2012, but a second review was done, and I think it was in September of 2012.
And then, and I read your brief that you sent in the packet, but there was, was there an opportunity for Mr. Zager to appeal this through the construction board, is that correct?
That is correct.
And Steve, did you file that appeal?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Were you aware that you could appeal it?
Well, you know, this has been kind of confusing, because as I said in my letter there, that as soon as the PUD was approved, I didn't realize there were further requirements. So what steps to follow, you know, we contacted the fire marshal and and the fire department, and we went through, you know, a council review, and I thought that was satisfactory to get to the point that I wanted to get to. And I I guess I have a problem with the code in general. I think that for us to sit here, sit here and count houses is not really what risk assessment is all about. I think when the state adopted this code, they knew that there would have to be some interpretation as to how to apply it, because we have all kinds of unique situations in Burlington with the little nicks and crannies. So I really believe it's up to the council to decide whether or not this fits this ordinance, and whether or not I should be penalized with this count going down Crystal also, and whether or not this is a good thing for Burlington in general. And I don't think it is. That's my point. So I think that the that the fire marshal follows the code that we adopt here. So what I'm saying is, I'm asking that code not to be part of our city code. I passed out how other people have done it. I've contacted a lot of other cities, and if you ask them, do they have this fire code, some of them will say yes. If you ask them, do they enforce it, they'll say no. So this is like issuing speeding tickets for 26 miles an hour. The code, the law says 25 miles an hour, but if we start writing tickets at 26, we're not going to have anybody interested in coming to Burlington. And I'm saying this is doing the same thing.
And Mark, you said that every community that you were aware of had this, other than Cedar Rapids, correct?
Well, first of all, we need to clarify, we're talking two different things.
We are, because we're talking about, we're talking about requirements for single and duplex properties versus access.
Right, so there's two different things here.
Yeah.
The one and two-family dwellings is actually not in the fire code, it's actually in the International Residential Code, which is something that is monitored and overlooked by the building officials downstairs. I don't even overlook that code.
Right.
So the fire code, what's what's driving this is strictly fire truck access. And Mr. Zager made a couple comments earlier that I just want to tag on to. Number one, it's the goal of the fire department, in the event of a fire, to be on the fire scene within five minutes of the report. It's actually, it takes us nine minutes to drive to that property from the central fire station right now. So we're already exceeding the four minutes it takes that that is our goal to to be on scene. Number two, Mr. Zager is correct, that it is newer products in the home construction, which, you know, home construction, the fire codes and the building codes actually get reviewed and they get updated every three years. And it's all based on current construction trends, current emergencies or tragedies that have happened. There is a lot of different people from many different facets that sit down and they sit on this board, and the actual codes are actually through the International Code Council. And so this is, what the city of Burlington has adopted is a model code. And we sit down and we go through that, and we compare notes with other cities. The state of Iowa is currently under the 2015 International Fire Code, but they have not adopted all parts of it. They've only adopted the parts that deal with, like, it's just, it's just like the first, I want to say, nine or 10 sections of the code. It's not the whole entire code. Other cities, just like Burlington, have gone in, and we compare what other cities are doing before we bring it up here to the council for you to adopt. So also, in talking with Ms. Gawn, when she called around to the other communities, she asked them specifically, do you require sprinklers in one and two-family dwellings?
Not about access.
It's not about access.
Okay.
You know, that's, and we don't require residential sprinklers. I saw Mr. Cahill earlier, he's doing a new development on West Avenue. He's not being required to put residential sprinklers in there. His road, he's got two different ways of coming in, is ultimately into his development. Just on Friday, Mr. Tisland and I sat down with a developer that's actually building or proposing building a new development at just outside the city limits of Burlington on the north side of town, but he's within the two-mile zoning. And so he's also having to require with, or having to comply with some of the requirements of the city's developments. And what he was originally proposing does not meet our intent. His street was too long, he didn't. And so he's actually trying to figure out how in the world he's going to come up and comply with his development to comply with our codes. So sprinklers was discussed in one of those, because he has a, as an option, because he has, one of the the areas that he's wanting to do is the street's way too long, and it exceeds the 750-foot length requirement. I will also throw out that this development at the far east end of Florence Avenue also exceeds the 750-foot requirement for dead-end roads. The 750-foot actually stops pretty much right at the intersection of Florence and Crystal. So we're already beyond the 750 maximum road length with this development as well. So I just want to clarify, I just want you to make sure that you understand that we are just like almost every other community in the state of Iowa, we don't require residential sprinklers in one and two-family dwellings. This is purely about access. This is a code that isn't enforced throughout many communities in Iowa just like this. And back in 2014, as I stated in my memo to you, I had sent out to two different fire marshal groups that I belong to, I sent out the what was going on here along with the map, and I received comments and feedback from several other departments. Cedar Rapids, at that time, they they had Appendix D, they had written it off at their last code adoption. I just checked with them earlier this week, they've already brought it back into their code adoption, so they currently have Appendix D as well, because they had some issues that they were not able to address. So.
Is there a fire hydrant on Mr. Zager's development?
Yes, there is. Yeah, that was part of the review process.
Thank you, you answered my question. I know as attending Citizens Academy, one of the things we learned is that today's fires burn faster and hotter, so you said that your development was going to be made with new materials, so that concerns me. And my question was, how long is it going to get to pull that fire truck there?
I I think there, I appreciate Mark's comments, and I know they do a good job of trying to come up with codes that are reasonable in terms of their application. Maybe not the word reasonable doesn't fit what I'm really trying to say here. I think that they are assessing risk, but people get on airplanes every day also, so we have risk and development opportunities that we have to assess. So this is one that I don't know anybody that's in favor of. That's the bottom line. If you want to call some people around the city and find out what they think about this, they're not in favor of it. The fact that this gentleman is thinking about how to shorten up his subdivision to meet the fire code is what really bothers me. We don't have fires in these new subdivisions out here, it's in the older homes with poor wiring and things like that. If we want to figure out how to to make this work, we could post signs with no parking on one side of the street, but the newer residences are less likely, is my term, is to have the fires that the older older homes are.
That's what I understood, is it was an access issue, and looking at the road, it looks like to me it's pretty straight. It's a straight turn and then a straight, straight left, and you're not going down a road like Crystal, but I, you know, I don't know if that would be worthwhile, but if we had eliminate parking on one way so we can get fire trucks down there, that's the main thing that I would be after, so. Because you, you know, it is an access point, we, you know, eventually those homes will be older, by the same token, to me, it seems like it's a pretty straight shot, looking at the map there, so.
This has been an interesting thing through reading research, and it really boils down to what individual cities want to do with circumstances like this. We have to have pocket development in Burlington. We're out of space, and we're going to have things like this come up over and over again. And I think when you got a straight shot, you got new streets, you got fire hydrants, I mean, we can't, back to the airplane example, you can eliminate every risk, but you sure can push development away from you by placing too much cost on it. $10,000 a unit will not make me competitive, that's the bottom line. For a hundred dollars, people go outside of town and buy a car. I'll start out saying, again, I applied for this subdivision, nothing was said about fire code, and it was approved. That by itself doesn't seem to fit what I call fair play. So I appreciate the fire department and what Mark has to say, but I've just got a different way of looking at how we go about solving these problems. And this to me is a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Mark, if if for, if we decide as a council to to waive the requirement, are there other things that you think should or could be done? What, like John brought up an interesting point, putting parking on only one side, are there other things that we could consider to ask Mr. Zager to do in order to help alleviate some of that that risk?
Parking's only allowed on one side of Florence Avenue now, as it is.
As it is, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, quite honestly, these codes, again, these are model codes that are are put in place, and again, they, we look at different communities, you know, as we sit down and we adopt these. So there are many, many, many communities across Iowa that have these codes, and they're adopted just like they are, and they're that way for a reason. You know, you think about it, we currently have 40 building lots in there. There could, there's probably 36 homes that currently exist in there, not counting the nine additional units that Mr. Zager is wanting to to put in there. So it becomes, you know, at what point does it become too many? We have one way in and one way out. And you could probably survey all the people on Crystal Drive, because they were majorly inconvenienced just a few years ago, when Crystal Drive was completely torn out, a whole new street was put in. And we were having to make plans for golf carts, for, we had to make plans to get emergency vehicles down that street when we had no street. We were making plans of extending fire hose down there, we were making plans of how are we going to get an ambulance caught down there. There's multiple, multiple reasons for having two ways in and two ways out. And a straight-lined street doesn't really matter a whole lot when the street's not there. And the people on Crystal, they, believe me, they, we had ambulance calls down there, and it was not easy for the crews. Luckily, we didn't have a fire, because, but we had plans, contingency plans in place if we would have had to do that. So, you know, and on the construction side of things, under the new types of construction, they're using things like TGI beams. You know, back, homes prior to 1980 were made with dimensional lumber. And furniture, back in the 50s and 60s and 70s, were made in a different, using different materials. Today's materials, they use TGI beams, which are basically chipboard that are all glued together.
With petroleum?
Yeah, there's a lot of benefit to those, because they're they're cheaper to make, they're stronger, you can go longer spans without support underneath them, but they also fail fast in a fire. Some of those unprotected TGI beams will fail in as little as six minutes. And, you know, hopefully, the people that are living in those homes And, you know, hopefully the people that are living in those homes can get out in that amount of time, but guess who's going in to put the fire out? Um, it's the firemen that are going in there and they're risking their lives to put out a fire when, um, you know, when we have an opportunity to take care of this right now. So, um, the, the furniture that we have, we could build a home and we could leave it empty, but it's the items that we're putting in there. The furniture that we have in these homes today, um, they're made with petroleum products. So they burn really, really fast and they burn really hot. And that's why the fires spread. We just lost a home out in rural West Burlington, almost a six hundred thousand dollar loss.
I was just going to say that.
It was almost a six hundred thousand, yeah. And that was, that was the home. It was a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home. And it was, uh, almost three hundred thousand dollars in contents and it was all gone. It was written off as a total loss. And part of the problem was is that, uh, we had about a ten minute response. The guys had literally just left another house fire. They hadn't even made it back to the fire station yet and when they got this one, so they were not in the fire station at the time. So when they got out there, we had a limited access road because we only had the minimum road width of twenty foot. And we didn't have any fire hydrants out in the rural side of things. So we had to be setting up, uh, drop tanks and we had to be shuttling water. And we were using our mutual aid agreements just like we have designed to do. But, um, in this particular case, um, we had newer construction. The fire, once the fire started, the fire actually started outside the house. And once it broke through into the house, the fire went right through the house. It, there wasn't any, um, doors were left open. There was the types of construction methods that were used. Um, it just really went right through that house. And so I don't know what else to say at this point, but we have real life examples that happen right here in this community. So I don't know what else. I mean, unless you guys have anything else for me, I don't know.
I mean, you've answered my question.
I get it. Okay, I'm, thank you, Mark. There's always going to be a fire story. I mean, nobody wants a fire. That's not the subject. The subject is assessment of risk and how to minimize that risk for people that live out in these areas. And, um, I don't believe that people in Burlington are going to be content to have sprinklers in their homes. The people that leave here in the wintertime want to shut their house down, not have to worry about freezing pipes and things like that. So I agree with Mark's points about that we've got to figure out ways to, uh, minimize risk. That's the whole subject, how to minimize risk. That location isn't anywhere near where mine's at. And we do have things that are, uh, more appropriate to extinguish in these fires. Uh, I don't want to go on.
I don't, I don't want to interrupt, but I, I understand where you're coming from. I don't want to get into a back on the fire.
Yeah, I don't either. That was my next comment, so I apologize and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
In terms of what you can or can't do, if you want to amend the code and eliminate, uh, Appendix D, that would take, uh, do a, a, a set date for public hearing and amend the, go through the amendment of code provision process if you want to do that. Um, one thing I would like to say from a staff perspective, during the subdivision review process, was this brought up as an issue?
Yes, it was in two thousand and ten and again in two thousand and...
So I don't want this to come across that this was not brought forward as an issue. When this was, when this occurred in two thousand and fourteen, when the council reviewed this same request and ultimately decided not to do this, this was again reviewed. You do have the authority, if you want to, to, to change this now. You're a new council. You can amend the court code section, but I don't want it to come across that our staff did not talk about this and make sure that folks knew what was going on. I don't want that to be communicated. So do you want this to come up as a, as an amendment of code or not?
I don't, I don't have a desire to see it, but I don't know how.
I know it's ten thousand dollars to sprinkle one unit. How do you put the price tag on a life? I'm, I feel your pain. I've taken lots of epidemiology classes. I understand relative risk. But if we're looking at statewide, all the stats, and it just doesn't point out that it's a, a safe thing. And it's nothing to do with, with your talent and your building and your units. It's an accessibility problem. We're just, it takes too long to get the trucks there.
Yeah, I got that. I kind of counter with, you know, Matt's point that built four or five homes in the last few years and those weren't required. So I guess I, my opinion, I would like us to at least vote on it.
I think that's, that's my biggest hangup is the fact that we, we allowed the, the other construction and didn't bring it up because it was so recent. I understand what Mark was saying, that development was approved back in the seventies. But I also have some serious reservations with regard to making an exception with this development due to the, the risk factor.
But it almost takes twice as long to pull a truck as what is recommended.
But one of the things that I've done at the home show the last couple of years is I've always showed a video of a new home that was built in two thousand and fourteen. And there's a little fire in the garage and it's about, it's just coming out of a small lawnmower. And in nine minutes, that whole house was fully engulfed. So and the amount of time it takes for his fire truck to get from, from downtown to the master's, whole building could be gone. So I have some serious reservations with that. But I also understand Steve's point, adding another ten thousand dollars per unit of development for this. I just, I see this as a scenario that's going to be so limited because I can't think of any other area in our community where this is going to be an issue, where there's only a single access point. But then the other portion that I have a problem with is the interpretation. Do we, do we count the number of homes from the right-hand turn to Steve's development? Or do we count the number of homes from the right-hand turn to, um, include all the homes down Crystal Drive? I just, I'm going to have to think about that for a little bit.
So do you want this to come?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
So rephrase.
I don't see the need to change, to change the code. I do think we need to have a conversation and vote on Mr. Zager's request.
So you want a variance rather than, you want to talk about a variance rather than a code change?
Yes.
And that's, you're not the one to go to for a variance. It's, uh...
Those guys.
Construction Board of Appeals is who has the right to issue that, not the council.
So we don't have the ability to do anything. And even if we did...
You have the right to do something, but it's to change the code.
But even if we were to change the code, would it be retroactive to Mr. Zager's development?
I think so.
I think we've brought it up, vote on it.
I think this needs to go back to the Construction Board. I would prefer to see it go back to the Construction Board.
Okay. So, no vote?
Good.
All right. We all clear?
I mean, Steve, that, that would have been the option available to you in two thousand and ten, right? And, and I think we can probably make that happen, right? Have the opportunity to appeal this back to them.
Yeah, you would just have to follow the bill process.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next we have, uh, appointments. And I think there was just one. It was...
Bob Francis to the golf course.
Any issues with that?
I...
No? Okay.
He's a great guy.
And then future discussion items, nuisance update. So, that's it.
Nuisance.
Got anything? Anything else?
Uh, just based on the, from the proclamation for Earth Day, uh, just a reminder, Earth Day is coming up Saturday, April twenty-first. Hopefully we don't have snow that day. Registration...
Now that you said that.
Yeah. Registration starts at eight-thirty at the Port of Burlington. Uh, we have free lunch afterwards, after the cleanup from eleven to twelve-thirty with door prizes. Uh, we have past Earth Day shirts you can wear or, uh, purchase new shirts for five dollars. That goes back to, um, the Keep Burlington Beautiful Committee that helps to some of the flower plantings and then clean up, uh, events that we have to fund those. So I encourage people to come on down to the port around eight-thirty and help clean up the community. Uh, we do it every year and every year we come back and the needs cleaned up again. So, uh, encourage everyone to come out if they're available.
Oh, Healthy Neighborhood Grants are due this Friday. So if you're contemplating doing that, get together with at least four of your neighbors. It's a tremendous project, whether you want to do new bushes, painting, flowering, redo your sidewalk. Uh, opportunity to get Matt's grant up to a thousand dollars.
Very good.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Good.
Counsel for radio on Wednesday?
I'm not available.
I can.
I can. Unless you prefer, because you're probably tired of the work, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do it.
Other than that, um, chamber, one of the things that we had talked or provided was, uh, we had a discussion about providing a, I think a third of the cost for doing a evaluation of usage of the different rec facilities. Ours as well as the proposed different rec, indoor rec facilities. Um, they're, they're in the process of looking at adding the tenant, or tennis, um, basketball courts, um, soccer, indoor soccer. And then, uh, they're looking, they have gone out for quotes for somebody, for firms to do evaluations of the usage of, of those facilities as well as the outdoor rec plex. Uh, what they see is potential markets, what they see is, uh, the ability to market those over time. Um, I know that they're, they, I think have gotten some responses back. I don't know that they've gotten all of them back. Uh, they do plan on making a decision how they're going to move forward on that, uh, selecting a vendor to do that, uh, review over the next few weeks. My understanding, that's about a five-month process to get results back, uh, when they, in terms of getting a good market study back and, and what our market really has, can feasibly support.
How's that going to fall into their timeline for getting?
So what that means is that if they're, they're looking to try to have a building up by the end of this year, that would most likely not have an impact on how they marketed it for this next season. Uh, but it would have an impact on how they marketed facilities, uh, over time. Um, part of what they look, are going to look at with that is, uh, what's the potential to coordinate events between, uh, indoor rec facility and the outdoor rec plex. Uh, see if there's any synergies that can be achieved by, because of the locations, uh, having them all in the same community, having the soccer, indoor soccer facility immediately adjacent to the rec plex. Be interested to see how that whole process goes, moves forward. Because that kind of hits on a goal that we talked about at budget season with the need to really take, evaluate what's going on with our outdoor rec plex. And, uh, what should we be looking at for, for that venue? Uh, should we expect that it's just the, the cycle that we have less revenues over time? Or should we be modifying, uh, how we market that, uh, from what, what, what's been done in the past? Staff has been involved, um, with reviews of different designs for the indoor facility and, and its layout, how the, how the, um, potential parking can go with that as well. That's something that I think that, um, the committee that oversees that is looking to bring to the council here over the next, uh, few meetings. And, you know, that's also the basis, it's pushing, putting our staff into a position where we're starting to think through, getting a design ready for a RISE grant application for an extension off of South Broadway. And then back to the east to West Burlington Avenue, if I get the streets right. That was one of our CIP items. Our goal was to have a, something in for consideration this fall. Um, and we need to get that, really this is putting us into a timeframe where we have to get that done fairly, fairly quickly.
I meet with Zach with Southeast Highway Regional Planning on Thursday. We'll go over. Um, I think all you need for a RISE grant application is conceptual design costs and its purpose behind it. I think they've submitted RISE grant applications for us in the past, but I'd like to try and get that done sometime in May for a fall. It's, it's fall for the deadline, but I'd like to get it submitted early.
Just for the road portion, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And so, and that's even one, we've had some discussions about if that facility starts in construction here fairly soon with the goal of being open by November, um, how, how do we make sure that we have adequate access, at least on, on a temporary basis? Um, I know that, uh, our engineering staff has looked at the idea of potentially just constructing a portion of that road. Just, at, as, at least as one of the options of what, what to do with it. Um, and, but then it wouldn't, if we do that, it's not going to be eligible for RISE funding for that portion. So we have some, we have to do some discussions over what's the right avenue to proceed to make this happen when, uh, there, it'll be done in phases. The soonest we can do a road construction would be next year. So, that's all I have. Anyone else have something?
Anyone else? No? Good?
Two hours. It's quick. Yeah, two hour work session.
All right. Well, thank you.